Testing one, two, three. Testing.
...Act of 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. If any member has reason to believe this meeting is being held in violation of this Act, they should state so at this time. Have the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make sure your microphones are on. Okay. Oh.
Mrs. Werner?
Here.
Mr. Vennuto?
Here.
Mr. Ledwin?
Here.
Mrs. Notch?
Here.
Ms. Sheehan?
Here.
Mr. Walsh?
Here.
Mr. Zexer?
Here.
Mr. Bodnar?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. We have the minutes of the October 24th, 2024 meeting. Would somebody like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vennuto, seconded by Mr. Ledwin.
Mr. Ledwin?
Yes.
Mrs. Notch? Mrs. Notch, do you want to vote on the minutes? Voting, adopting, voting on adopting the minutes? Would you like to vote? Yes? Okay, thank you. Ms. Sheehan?
Abstain.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Zexer?
Yes.
Mr. Vennuto?
Yes.
Mrs. Werner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, our first resolution is for Edward and Linda Farrington, 1012 Pittsburgh Avenue. Can we have that motion?
I'll make, I'll second.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Notch, seconded by Ms. Stevenson, I mean Ms. Sheehan.
Sorry, I'll do this way.
No, you need to change it from S's.
Mr. Ledwin?
Abstain.
Mrs. Notch?
Yes.
Ms. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Zexer?
Yes.
Mr. Vennuto?
Yes.
Mrs. Werner?
Abstain.
Thank you.
Our next resolution is Jack and Eileen Oaks, 1145 Washington Street.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Zexer and seconded by Ms. Stevenson.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ledwin? Mrs. Notch?
Yes.
Ms. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Zexer?
Yes.
Mr. Vennuto?
Yes.
Mrs. Werner?
Abstain.
Thank you.
Our next one is Michael Kennedy, 722 Columbia Avenue. Make a motion?
I'll second, oh, I'll make a motion, sorry.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Sheehan and seconded by Mr. Zexer.
Mr. Ledwin? Mrs. Notch?
Yes.
Ms. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Zexer?
Yes.
Mr. Vennuto?
Yes.
Mrs. Werner?
Abstain.
Thank you.
Okay, our first application tonight is for Christopher Roner, 1514 Valvento Avenue.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board, John Amanhauser of the DeWes Law Firm here this evening on behalf of the applicant, Christopher Roner. Subject property for this application is 1514 Valvento Avenue. It's identified on the city's tax map as block 1176.02, lot 1.08, and it is located in the R1 zoning district. Prior to arriving tonight, we did receive recommendations for approval from City of Cape May Fire, Public Works, and Shade Tree Commission, respectively on December 3rd and December 5th. Through the application that we presented before you, what we're seeking is variance relief related to maximum permitted fence site in a front yard. As you know, four feet is permitted. We're proposing six feet through this application. Here with me this evening to provide some testimony in respect to the application and why it is that we're seeking this is Mr. Joseph Monak. Joe is a professional engineer with the firm of de Blasio and Associates who drafted the variance plan that was provided with our application. I think this is Joe's first time here, so I'm happy to elicit some credentials from him before we start. And then I also have to my left the applicant, Mr. Christopher Roner. I don't intend to elicit testimony from Mr. Roner, but he's here should the board have questions or need to fill in any gaps should anything come up this evening. If I can have them both sworn, though, I think that makes most sense.
If each of you, please raise your right hand. We're also going to swear on our board engineer, Craig Hurlis. Do each of you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths up you got?
I do.
If a gentleman could turn on your microphones.
Oh, awesome. Good. So, Joe, if you can, can you provide some credentials to the board, your educational and professional background?
Sure, yeah. I have a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering from the University of Delaware. On behalf of de Blasio and Associates, I perform land use board reviews for Wildwood Crest and Bunaburro, as well as sitting as the board engineer for Bunaburro. In addition to that, I've been before several boards in Cape May County and a few in Atlanta County.
How long you been licensed, Joe?
Over two years.
Okay. And as you indicate, you've provided testimony in support of applications at many boards throughout this county, correct?
Yes.
Is that sufficient, Mr. Chairman? All right, thank you.
Hi, guys. Are you a planner or no? If you are, I want to put it down.
No.
No, okay, that's fine.
All right. So, Joe, if you can, to start, can you give the board some general information, a brief overview of this property, and some specific features related to it?
Sure, so the proposed activities for this application is a single-family dwelling. The lot, the subject lot is a corner lot with actually three frontages, that being on Valvento Avenue, Brooklyn, and New York Avenue. The structure is a single-family dwelling and also a proposed pool and onsite parking.
So, Joe, you just mentioned that this lot being on the corner that actually faces frontages on three streets, so it's got three front yards, right? From a technical sense?
That's correct.
Given that, is it your professional opinion that that unique feature of this lot provides practical difficulties with being able to develop and meet all the requirements related to zoning ordinances and front yard setbacks, et cetera?
Yes.
All right. That said, we meet all the bulk requirements of the R1 district through this application, correct?
Yes.
So, despite that, we need variance relief related solely to maximum permitted fence site in a front yard, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, I mentioned earlier, four feet is typically allowable. We're proposing six. The way that we are proposing to situate the building on this lot, where are we looking to front the building, on which street?
So, it's going to front on Brooklyn.
So, fronting on Brooklyn, that would essentially, although technically a front yard, the frontages along Valvento and New York are more akin to side yards traditionally, correct?
That's correct.
Right. Now, if viewed in the context of those being side yards, would you be permitted to have six-foot fences along those lot lines?
Yes.
So, given that, Joe, and the difficulties that go along with needing the three, meeting the requirements for front yard fence site when you have three front yards, is it your professional opinion that certain purposes of zoning would be advanced if the board were inclined to grant the relief request that they have a six-foot fence along the Valvento and New York frontages?
Yeah, I do believe there are purposes of zoning that are advanced, to promote a desirable visual environment and to provide light air and open space. The application includes, you know, compliance with all setback requirements and building heights, so for that reason, I believe it does, you know, promote open air.
Joe, a little, I guess a little further, too, we should talk. So, where we're proposing the enclosed space inside of the proposed six-foot fences, it's a rear yard behind this proposed dwelling, correct?
Yes.
And what are we, some of the features that are proposed in that rear, we're proposing an in-ground swimming pool, correct?
Yes.
So, given that, is it also your professional opinion that having a six-foot privacy fence is suitable, given the intended use of a permitted accessory use, swimming pool in that rear yard?
Yes.
Makes more sense than having a four-foot fence that anybody can see into and over?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. All right. So, Joe, you gave some testimony related to the positive criteria that you believe would be advanced if the board were to grant this, and that's under the C2 Substantial Benefit Balancing Act test. Is it also your professional opinion, under the C1 hardship criteria, that the unique feature of this lot, particularly the three frontages, would allow the board to grant the relief under that scenario as well?
Yeah, I believe that does apply as the property essentially doesn't have a rear yard.
Right. Now, back to the C2 criteria, in addition to the positives you placed on the record, is it also your professional opinion that if the board were inclined to grant this relief, there would be no substantial detriment, either A, the public good, or B, the zone plan ordinance of the city?
Yeah, I don't believe there would be. Visiting the site prior to this evening, I did observe the landscaping easement that exists on New York Avenue, and it seems that the intent there is to have trees with significant height creating some type of screening, where a fence that is six foot as opposed to four foot essentially makes that objective, you know, it fulfills that objective of the landscape easement.
So, you mentioned you drove around that neighborhood or reviewed some of those properties in advance at tonight. Did you also notice that there's any other properties along this block that have six-foot fences in the front yard?
Yeah, yeah, every application rises and falls on its own merits.
Understood completely.
Yeah, there is a property on the opposite corner there that does have a six-foot fence in, really on the corner, whereas this is proposed tucked back behind the building.
Okay.
Less invasive.
That said, though, there are other six-foot fences and front yards in the neighborhood, so would this, if this were to be approved, would it not, it wouldn't be out of character with existing conditions in that neighborhood, would it?
I would agree with that, yes.
Okay. Joe, did you have a chance prior to providing testimony tonight to review Mr. Hurlis's review memorandum from October 29?
I did, yes.
Okay. Obviously, we want to discuss some of the comments that are included in his general review section. Do you have any objection to any of the comments raised as conditions of approval?
None at all. We agreed to comply with all comments set forth in the report and are willing to work with the board engineer on all items outlined.
Okay. Joe, anything else that you'd like to add before we turn it over to the board with any questions they might have?
That's all I have.
That's everything? All right. Man of chair, I don't have anything else, Mr. Monak.
Can I ask a question? I just don't have the spelling of your last name, please.
Oh.
That was my first and my two questions.
Thank you.
Would you agree that the fence is a safety feature for the pool?
Yes.
Would you agree that a six-foot fence is safer than a four-foot fence?
Yes.
Do you think that advances the purpose of zoning related to safety?
Safety and welfare, yes.
All right, thank you. I'm going to add that to your list.
Thank you.
If I may, what kind of fence are we talking about? Wood, vinyl, chain link? There's no, there's no description anywhere?
No, it's just a solid fence. I'm not sure what it's going to be yet. Could be vinyl.
Six-foot solid privacy.
Yes, six-foot solid privacy. I mean, it's going to hold up the best in the, you know, the weather conditions here as opposed to wood, so.
I also have a question. So, the fence goes all the way to the sidewalk on... Vennuto, is that right? It goes all the way to the sidewalk?
I think it's, there's...
Which frontage are you talking about?
Valvento.
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 Valvento?
Next to driveway.
First of all, there's no sidewalk.
So, it goes all the way to the street, then?
Yeah, I mean, I think it sets back off the street a little bit.
Well, that's my question, I guess.
Yeah, it goes...
How far back off, Joe?
We don't have a dimension to the center line of the street, but...
In relate, while you guys are figuring that out, I'm just going to... When this major subdivision was developed and approved, the residential site improvement standards for Valvento Avenue only required sidewalk on one side, and that's on the opposite side of the street.
Okay.
So, Valvento will have sidewalk on the opposite side, but not on this side.
Okay, I guess my reasoning is if there's a driveway or it becomes a blind spot for people backing out when you have a six-foot fence all the way to, I don't know what it is, to the street? I don't know.
It's the right-of-way line.
Right.
Okay, so it's like three feet in?
It's about five feet in.
Oh, five, okay, that's fine.
And also, the, to address your concern about not being able to see, it's a one-way, Valvento is a one-way street, and it's, I'm open on the side where traffic's coming from.
That's you, but not your neighbor. I didn't know what your neighbor would be able to see at, that's what, I don't know what the house is next to you. That was my thing.
Okay.
That fence does not affect the site triangle for the driveway on the adjoining block.
Okay.
It's sufficiently far enough away that it's not impacted.
Okay. And then the six-foot fence on New York Avenue, is that correct?
Yes.
And that just goes double with the house?
That's correct. Yes, it was just running to here.
Up to the front of the house, yes. Now, that sets back further because you have a landscape buffer.
Correct. There's a 10-foot wide landscape easement. We're actually 25 feet to the...
Yeah, if you could bring them closer to you, that would be helpful. Closer to your...
Yeah, that sets back further because of the landscape buffer.
I don't think they can still hear you. You've got to bring them closer. You've got to speak into the mic.
It sets back further because of the landscape buffer. Thank you.
Okay. So, it stops at the beginning or the back of the house, and it goes around and comes up the driveway on the other side, correct? That's...
That's correct.
I mean, it's, Rich, it's in our ordinance that four foot is all that is required for safety reasons, correct?
I don't know.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, they're going beyond that, so, but four foot is still within our ordinance for safety?
I don't know. And I'm not sure it's a zoning issue. There's a fence height requirement from a particular side of a fence for a pool, and I'm not even sure it's a zoning thing. I think it's a construction limitation as well.
Well, you're trying to make a point for them that six foot would be safer. I'm just saying four foot is only the requirement.
I was trying to make a point that, I was just saying that six foot is by definition safer than four foot if the object is to keep people from getting over the fence. An eight foot would be safer than a six foot, I suppose, but I wasn't arguing in their favor, I was just pointing out that it is a safety feature, so it is a purpose of zoning, but it's certainly not, I don't think anyone testified that they're required to have a six-foot pool, so I think they acknowledge that they, I mean, I know that's true. How high does a, I thought a fence had to be 40, I thought it was 48 inches.
Forty-eight, four feet.
For a pool, that's...
That's 48.
It's 48 on a pool. I got it in litigation over one side of the fence was lower than the other because of a retaining wall, so the question was which side of the fence had to have the 48 inches? So, that's how I spend my life. But, actually, I thought it should be the outside, but they thought it was the inside, but nevertheless. So, yeah, I think a four foot's the minimum required by the construction ordinance. I don't know that we have, by a construction code, I don't know that our ordinance requires a certain height fence around a pool.
I don't, I don't believe it does.
The code, it's not a zoning issue, it's a construction code.
I try to be very particular for Ms. Sheehan because she's very particular. So, when I said I don't know with the four foot, I meant in our zoning ordinance. It's a constructions, it's a construction code requirement to have a fence around a pool, and the height of it is regulated by the construction code.
Right.
For our zoning, I don't think there is a requirement for a pool, for a fence around a pool. I don't think there's a minimum height or maximum height.
There is a requirement for a fence, the way that it's phrased is a safety fence is required, and it just says safety fence, and it doesn't have a height associated with it, and the construction official determines what the current construction codes are that are sufficient to...
Okay. So, I have, my question is, the front yard will be Brooklyn Avenue, the front of the house, right?
That, that's where we're facing the house, yes.
So, we're right next to the driveway, that's the six-foot fence that we're, that we're giving the variance for, is that correct? Right by the drive, because that would be the front yard facing that way, right? Because you're allowed to have it across Valnetto?
Valvento.
Valvento. You're allowed to have that six foot because that's not, that's...
We're not. That's why we're here is...
I just want to know which side we're talking about?
Valvento Avenue side is what we're the variant.
And, but also the...
And New York.
And New York.
Brooklyn, when you're facing it, that is also going to be six foot by the driveway, so we're talking about that side, on the right side, right there by the driveway, also?
Say that again, please.
You're looking at the house from Brooklyn. Right by the driveway, on the other side of the driveway, there's a six-foot fence. We're talking about that six-foot fence?
Yes.
And we're talking about also the six-foot fence on Valvento?
On Valvento, yes. The Valvento Avenue is the one that does not conform the most. It's the most prominent, it sticks out closest to the right-of-way, the closest.
Right, but it's for those two, and then also the one on New York Avenue? So, there's three fences that should only be at four feet, they're supposed to be, they're not going to be at six feet.
I don't think, I think it's just the two.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
No, it's, okay, hold on. Craig, Craig again will correct me if I'm wrong or clarify for me, but I think it's an issue of a fence in a front yard. And it's the definition of a front yard, I believe, is the area beyond the principal structure.
Correct.
So that if that fence stopped, you'll use the Valvento side for a second, if that fence stopped where the house stops, then arguably that would be, not need a variance because it would be a six-foot fence that's not in a front yard. For that reason, along New York Avenue, because the fence appears to me to stop at the structure, the principal structure, that fence is probably not in a front yard, so it's allowed to be six foot. So, the only area that I would say they need the variance for, and again, Craig will correct me if I'm wrong, is this three-pronged area.
Well...
Near Valvento, beyond the house.
It looks like that's a porch there, so it stops before it gets to the house.
I see, I see, are they parking, is that an overhang? What is that?
These are parking spaces.
No.
Are they parking spaces under something?
No.
Okay, so then...
It looks like a deck.
There's a 25-foot setback there, they meet that. If you look at the 25-foot front yard, that's the, that's the closest face of the structure to the street.
Oh, then Craig, can you answer something for me then? Where's the front yard in this house start, then?
At the 25-foot setback from, from Valvento. So, that U-shaped portion that you were just pointing at is what I believe is what they're seeking the variance for.
Yes.
So, everything forward between the face of the structure and Valvento Avenue, any fence that's in that area is not conforming, and that's what they're seeking the variance for.
Okay, I'll go with that. I just, I thought that, I didn't think our front yard was defined by the setback, but rather by...
The face of the structure, but their, their face of the structure and the setback are one and the same.
Okay, but that's what Machine is asking, and I assumed that too, but I, where does that structure, where does the structure start on this property? At the 25-foot mark or after those parking spaces? I thought it started at the 25-foot mark.
Right, that's...
Okay, so, so where those parking spaces are, that's not open air. There's, that's underneath a structure.
No, it's open.
That's open air.
It's open air. We have that box in there just to show that that's parking area, but it's not a structure.
Then I'm back to the point in place of, then where's the face of the structure? It's not 25 feet, it's like at 50 feet.
No, it's 25 feet.
We have it marked at 25 feet.
The second set of parking spaces are in a garage.
That's what I just asked.
No, you, so there's, there's four parking spaces. The first two sit on brick ribbons.
Right, I understand. I'm talking about the ones with the X's.
That's, that's open air, that is not covered by any structure. Then you pull into the garage and park the other two. So the face of the structure is right on the 25-foot setback.
I know, but no, I, someone misheard me. I said that the parts with the cross marks through them is that open air. I was asking for the things with the X's through them, the cone-shaped parking indicators. These things right here.
The dash lines represent parking spaces.
They're parking spaces, but they're within a structure.
Yes, sir. There's two located... The first two are.
The only answer to that is yes.
Yes.
So, Machine, to clarify your question, the structure goes all the way to 25-foot mark. So what I said was right. That U-shaped area that's within the 25 feet also happens to be the area that is beyond the structure.
Right.
So when you, it doesn't go all the way back, you're looking at me, go ahead, so...
No, I mean, if we did finish your sentence, that's all.
All right, well, maybe it was a long sentence then, I'm sorry. So, why? I don't know, I thought I was really clear.
I can, I can point out the exact area.
The area beyond the structure is the part where it can't be six feet, along Valvanto. It's that simple.
Why don't you take that up with you?
Okay, do you have a further question after that?
This right here is a deck, right?
No, that's a, that's a ground-level pool patio area.
Right, okay, but it's not a structure.
It's not a structure.
So this is where I thought he said it had to be, it's past the structure.
Show her where the house ends, John.
The house is right here.
Yeah, I know.
Right, so the area that we're asking really relates to that view right there.
Right, okay, and I was asked, okay, that's, I knew it was that area. I was saying what constitutes that it has to be a variance. That was my question, because it's past the driveway, and it's the side yard, that's where...
It's not past the driveway, it's past the structure, the front face of the structure.
It is past it.
It is.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's, that's what makes it non-conforming, because the definition says any, anything in the front yard is defined as between the face of the structure and the street line. So any structures out there are non-conforming. We allow four-foot fences there. If it was a four-foot fence, fine, but as soon as it hits six, variance.
Yep.
Are there houses on the other side of Valvanto, facing that?
There are not...
Across the street, is there gonna be any houses facing that?
There, there will be. There are lots across the street, none of which are developed yet.
Because I thought of New York Avenue was supposed to be the back of the houses and Valvanto, the...
So, this is a little... And I was gonna talk about this when I went through my review, but the applicant mentioned another similar lot at the other end of the block that this board considered. Some of you guys remember, and there's some new members here, but I'm just, I'll just highlight that. So, that application, they came in for a pool patio that were in the setbacks along New York Avenue, as well as, and I think that's Baltimore Avenue. So it was for variances on both of those streets, as well as fence height in the front yard. And that front yard was Baltimore and New York. So this one, this applicant has designed a house where they could fit the pool in that is totally conforming. They don't need a variance from us, that pool conforms. So their architecture and the layout of the site is more conforming than that other lot. The only thing that they're asking for here is just a six-foot fence that they think provides more privacy for that pool, and hopefully for their side, the neighbor on that side. And that's, that's the difference between those two applications. And I also think that there is a little bit of difference in the development pattern, because across the street from that lot is Baltimore Avenue, which is all wetlands that would never be developed. So they oriented the pool and the fence closest to that, so it would be, now here, they've turned the house towards Brooklyn Avenue, where there are other houses that have that pattern along Brooklyn Avenue, across the street, as well as to the north of that, have that front yard pattern oriented towards Brooklyn Avenue. So that's not out of character of the street. So I, I think this is, you know, going towards the creative design of trying to make that work, and, and coming up with a compliant pool, and they think that this is a better alternative than what, what they, what they would be required to do.
Correct.
I think that, my personal feeling, when you're mentioning character of the street, there's no other fences on Valvanto that go from the house out to the street. If you're on the corner of Brooklyn and Valvanto and look down the street, it's a straight shot. There's no fence that runs out on any of the other houses. You're gonna have solid fence to the concrete apron for the driveway, whereas the other fences end at the end where the house is end. This would be the only fence that extends that far, four foot, six foot anyways. And I realize you can have a fence, but it's really gonna stick out there when you're looking down that street.
If necessary.
There's no other fence on Valvanto.
We're gonna set it back five feet.
And the fence on the other corner had the 10-foot setback, and that's why we proved that.
You do.
Maybe it's a short section of fence.
It is.
Yes, their next-door neighbor actually has a white vinyl fence that extends all the way out to the right-of-way line. So they would be matching up against an existing, no? What? I could be a hundred percent wrong, but I stood there and I looked down the street, I didn't see a fence out there.
That's correct, Craig. I thought, I swore that there was a white vinyl fence that runs all, your next-door neighbor right out to the right-of-way line. That's correct. On that second lot in.
That's not my recollection of what I saw, but I don't know.
Okay, so doesn't, Karen showed me, Karen showed me a photo in the, in the, in the file. Doesn't, it's, so it matches up with the face of the structure and not all the way out to the right-of-way line, so I misspoke.
Thanks, Karen.
I'm not saying that for again.
Joe?
Yes.
How many feet of fence is it? What's the setback off the back lot? It's 20? 25? Yeah. Why don't you point that out?
Just, not character, and it's not how people do it. If you see them, the open fences, or they're lower, they're like two or three feet high, but it's legal.
Somebody's gotta tell them what, put it in perspective. 25 feet. 25 feet of fence.
Joe can provide the test.
Okay.
Joe, do you wanna just, Mr. Mohan is asking, he talked about how long of a fence along Valvanto we're talking about here.
Yeah, roughly scaling, it appears to be 30 feet frontage on Valvanto.
And then it dips back toward the structure, correct?
Sets back five feet.
Correct.
Is there any landscaping facing the street?
Joe, if you wanna touch on it.
Yeah, our office, as a condition of approval, will prepare a landscaping plan, and we'll work with the board engineer to finalize that plan, so that it is to the satisfaction of the city.
That was included as a condition, Mr. Hurlis' review letter, I believe.
I'm getting the sense that the board wants you to step this back some.
I am getting the same sense.
Okay. Is 10-foot acceptable? Would the board be okay with a 10-foot setback with landscaping in front of it? 10-foot, 10-foot from where it is located on the plan, so it's gonna be back 10-foot.
We're, we're not done our presentation yet, though.
You'll be able to speak later.
Sir, he doesn't even vote. You're gonna, you're, you're...
We can put plenty of landscaping in front of the five-foot.
We can put plenty of landscaping in front, in front of the fence at the five-foot right-of-way area, and...
We can. That's this public right-of-way.
You can't, anything there?
No.
Okay.
So what we can indicate, I know that there's, gotta go to the public, but to Mr. Hurlis' point and speaking with my client, we can back that fence 10 feet back and put landscaping in front of it. So essentially, you'd have a, an additional 10-foot off of Valvanto that we'd be proposing, still with a six-foot fence that comes across, but backed up 10 feet. We could do that if the board was inclined. Correct, because you have the five now, add the 10, right. Correct, right. We can, yeah, yep.
From a streetscape standpoint, if I'm standing on Brooklyn and I'm looking down towards Baltimore, I'm not gonna see the fence coming out to Valvanto.
You're gonna see less than, it'll be that way.
You're gonna see less than, right.
Well, I'll see 10-foot less, right, but it'll, it'll appear to come to the structure, to the end of the structure. The same as the other house next to it, which also has a pool.
It'll stick out 15 feet from the structure.
Okay.
Because right now it's 25, it'll go back to 15.
15. Okay.
Right, and then, and we're proposing parking in that area, so you'd have cars that block it.
Yeah.
Not to make their case for them, but I just wanna help you think about it a little bit. Part of what's driving this dynamic, right, because zoning is a, all, all the bulk things impact the design. Remember, the proposed pool has to be 10-foot from every structure, from the principal structure. So it pushes the pool out, okay? So the pool's kind of out in the middle there.
True.
Then, they also need to fence in the pool. So they're trying to create a backyard in a property that has three 25-foot setbacks on it.
Yeah.
Okay, so those front setbacks are kinda condensing the developable area. And then they have to put the pool 10 feet away from all the structures. And a pool has a larger, Craig will correct me or whatever, because it's a pool, I think that has to have a 10-foot in the back, from that back line.
That's 10...
Right, and that's what we're giving it.
10-foot setback from all yards, or pool.
So, now they're trying to create a backyard with the fence. So that's why they're resisting moving the fence in, because it's making their, essentially their backyard is...
Condensed.
Is squeezing more. So they got the 25 feet on New York, they gotta come back 25 feet on the other one, and 25 feet here. So, I'm not trying to sway you.
No, 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 I get it, I get it.
Their rear yard, their backyard, the backyard that they have for their pool is not a pigish backyard, it's not that big of a backyard. So, that's why the 10-feet is kind of a big give over there, because it's a, you know, it's 10 by 20, it's a couple hundred square feet. Your backyard, that's not a big one to begin with. I'm just, just getting you to think about the whole of the bulk.
But it's not so much the, it's the height of the fence is six-foot. That's, I think, you know, for me, it's one of my biggest issues, is the height of the fence, that it's six-foot. So now you're, you're almost creating like a, a wall.
I'll just remind you that if it's four feet, if it's four feet, they go right out to the road.
Right.
I know, but six-foot is almost like a wall that you're putting up that you're not allowing, you know?
I'm just pointing out to you.
Right.
Right.
I think at this point, the analysis is, is a six-foot fence set back 10 feet from that line a better alternative than a four-foot high fence that can go all the way out to the right-of-way line?
And that's true.
That might be the analysis.
That's true.
That's it.
Yeah.
Well, then Craig, do you need a variance because you're shortening the distance from the structure out to the...
No, the, anything, anything in front of the face of the structure that's six-foot high needs the variance. So they still need the variance.
No, I, I understand it.
It just, it shortens up, you're now looking at a 15-foot extension in front of that for the fence instead of 25, what they're proposing.
Right.
But they're showing on that plan that you have in front of you.
Does that need a variance, though? To shorten that?
Yes.
Okay.
It's the same relief.
It's the same relief.
Yeah.
They're just lessening the extent of it.
Well, they're asking then for two, or they're asking for six-foot plus a change in the setback.
No.
No.
No, just the fence height.
A fence, the fence can be anywhere in the front yard, at four-foot height. Once you go to six, it becomes non-conforming and they need the variance.
That's right, I agree.
Let's do your, your report here.
Okay, I would like to summarize my October 29, 2024 review memorandum. This is a project located in the R1, a low-density residential district. You've heard testimony from the applicant indicating the only variance that they're seeking here is for the six-foot fence height in the front yard area. So I'm gonna roll right into the completeness review. They asked for a couple of waivers. Under item number five, they asked for a waiver from providing the architectural plans. They've indicated that everything's gonna conform, they're gonna, so when they get reviewed for a building permit, they're gonna be required to conform with all the other bulk and area variances, I mean, bulk and area requirements, and there's no variances requested for that, so therefore I did feel that that waiver was, should be granted. Under item number 27, they asked for a waiver from providing the locations of the utility layouts. I recommended that that be provided on the plan as a condition of approval. We do not want to see the fence conflict with any of the services that go into the lot. Item number 28, the design calculation showing the drainage facilities, that was a condition of approval for the original planning board approval, so therefore we would like to see that as a condition of approval. And finally, and they've already talked about providing some landscaping, we've asked that a landscaping plan be provided as a condition of approval. Based on those recommendations, we did support the completeness of this application. On page three of five of my report, I have the bulk and area charts. If you look at the R1 P W district for all other uses, which is for single-family dwellings, you'll note that they are conforming with all of the bulk and area requirements. It does have three front yards, as they indicated, and there's three fronts and one rear yard. So there's a 30, there's three 25-foot setbacks and one 30-foot setback, so, so it is unique to that lot with three front yards. With regards to the swimming pool, if you look, all of the swimming pool bulk and area requirements are met except for the fence and railing, and that's because the height of that is in, the six-foot height is within the front yard setback, and therefore that's the variance that's required from Section 525, Section 57E3. And we've talked quite a bit about that, if there's any questions with regards to the variance. But, like I said, I believe the test is whether a six-foot-high foot set, foot fence set back 10 feet from the right-of-way line is a better zoning alternative than a four-foot one that could be brought all the way out to the right-of-way line. Okay, under general review comments, these should be conditions of approval, should the board grant approval. Item number one, we've asked for a fence detail. I believe the record has indicated that they're providing a six-foot solid vinyl fence, so that detail should reflect that. Item number two, we've asked for construction details for pervious paving surfaces, just to verify that they are conforming with lot coverage. Item number three, we've asked for a couple of setback dimensions to be provided on the plan, just to verify that there's 10-foot setbacks. It does look like that, but we would like to set back on there. Item number four, they're required to comply with the minimum stormwater management and grading requirements of Chapter 525. There's a stormwater system design has been provided, but they have not given us the calc's, so we would like to review those and just make sure that it complies. Item six, item number five, we asked for them to revise the parking calculations for five bedrooms and indicate that there's a total of three parking spaces are required. They have met that, they exceed it. There's no issues with that. Item number six, this is of particular attention for the applicants, because a lot of times when they construct, they get this wrong. The pool equipment locations have to comply with the required pool setbacks. So that pool, those, those equipment locations need to be provided on the plan, and with the setbacks to mention to them to make sure that they comply. Item seven, is our standard condition that they comply with the city sewer and water department for the proposed connections. Item number eight is a requirement... Item number eight is a requirement that they provide a landscaping and vegetation plan, which is, should be a condition of approval, already talked about that. And there are new landscaping requirements for pools under item number nine. So the landscaping plan should reflect that. There's buffering that's required along all the side and, and front yards, so that needs to be shown on the landscaping plan. Ten is our standard condition. Prior to we evaluate, uh, give granting a CO, we evaluate the sidewalk condition. Now, you do have sidewalk on two sides, I know there's none in the front, but a lot of times the contractors break those sidewalks up. We evaluate that and make you replace anything and make sure it's suitable prior to your CO. Under item number eleven, you're required to post the inspection escrow account, and your CO is tied to that acceptable inspection. Item number twelve, you're required to comply with the requirement to the Shade Tree Commission, Fire Department, and Public Works. We did get a Fire Department recommendation for approval dated 12/3/24. Public Works recommended approval 12/3/24. Shade Tree Commission recommended approval with a condition dated 12/5/24, and they said there are no significant trees on the property. Care should be taken not to damage the street trees on Brooklyn and New York Avenue. So you're required to comply with that. Thirteen, you're required to comply with any and all other state, county, and local approvals. Fourteen is informational, this is not in the historic district. Fifteen, you're required to comply with the affordable housing requirements. And finally, should the board grant approval, you're required to submit perfected plans to address all the conditions of approval and submit the requisite number of sets to the board engineer for review and approval. That's the summary of my report, I'm happy to answer any questions the board has.
Any questions from the board?
That four foot buffer zone that the, the city requires for...
That was the landscaping comment that I made.
Does it matter if it's in front of the fence or behind the fence they don't require?
I don't, it, I don't think that it specifies, I think it could be either or.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think it just has to be on the perimeter of the pool on that, on that lot line.
Okay. Okay, so at this time, we'll open it up to the public within 200 feet of the property.
She asked if you could move the plan over.
My apologies for not speaking into the microphone. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, no one within 200 feet, beyond 200 feet.
I'd ask everyone to keep an open mind as you hear from the public, they're part of the evidence. Sir, will you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, Subby God?
I do.
If you could please state your name and address?
Hunter Cochran, 1429 New Jersey Avenue. It's at the corner of New Jersey and Baltimore Avenue.
Could you just spell that last name for me?
C O C H R A N E.
Okay, I have 1429 New Jersey.
Is your microphone on, sir?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
I'm, I'm not as technically challenged, I, I figured that part out, sorry.
So I have a question for Mr. Hurlis, please. You're saying there's no, no front yard setback on a fence. A fence can go all the way to the lot line at the street?
That's correct.
If it's four feet high?
It's four feet.
Thank you, I think this concession of moving the fence ten feet away from the street is an improvement. I don't like the fact that it's six feet high. I think that's going to be visually awkward and difficult, especially for the, whoever the neighbor is who buys a lot across the street, looking toward the ocean through this fence, or trying to look through this fence. Those are my comments, thank you very much.
Anyone else beyond 200 feet? Close to the public? Any other questions or comments from the board?
My only comment is that I think it's, um, it's damaging to the streetscape, putting up a six foot fence. In the front, well, it would be the front side. But also, okay. That's just...
Can you say that again, Stacy?
Right. I feel that the six foot fence would almost be too much for the streetscape to handle, that it would look like a wall looking at it from Velveño, Velveño Avenue. That, because you're going to have it coming all the way down at six foot, it's going, going to go across six foot and then come back in six foot. I think it's damaging to the streetscape.
The reason earlier I asked about what kind of fence is, I know on New York Avenue, the backs of some of these houses have, I don't know if it's aluminum or steel wrought iron, and it's much less intrusive if you're driving down that street. You can see through it, they have plantings there. I would much rather see something like that, if we're gonna have to, have to have a fence come out, something that you could see through. You're looking down that street, it's going to be this white wall, whether it's four foot or six foot high. You're required to have plantings there, if the plantings are sufficient to block the sightline, it would be the same, have the same effect.
Well, we, we need to make, before they vote, so we should think about that.
What, the lower height of the fence?
Not the lower, but a different, as opposed to fully blocked, like a, a solid, I don't, fence.
One foot top open.
I think the whole reason they want the six foot is for privacy and for, to be like a wall.
Yeah, that's what I think, yeah, so, so it's privacy and you can't see as they're in the pool, yeah.
But, you know, a lot of people have four foot fences and they still have privacy.
Well, if, if, Sheen, I, I just want to, and I'm not, I, I don't vote, I really have no feeling how I should go or anything. I'm just reminding you that if, if you, suppose you say no, suppose that the variance is denied. It's my legal opinion, they could go tomorrow and get a building permit and put a four foot fence all the way out to Velveño, and you'll never hear about it again, except when you're having dinner next week and someone says, "Why did you allow that solid four foot fence all the way up to the curb?" And you're gonna have to say, "I didn't, they'd have to come here," or what they're both... So I'm just, I'm just pointing out that really what should be going on, the analysis you're doing in your head, I think.
I want to offer that.
Should be.
That's true.
Do we want, because if I were the applicant and I lost, I would just give myself a big backyard with a four foot fence all the way out to the curb and plant some trees to make it go up six feet, and I think that's the end of that, so. I think you're analyzing whether it's better to have a six foot fence ten feet back or a four foot fence wherever they want it. That, that's, that's the reality, I, I think, I think that's the zoning.
But right now, what's on the table is it for it to go all the way to the street, we deny it change.
It's not, we...
We have not said anything.
They said that they've, they're prepared to have you vote on it being ten foot back from Velveño at six feet. And reality is, is we either, I think you're either taking that, which is, I'm not saying you have to, or you think, well, we don't want a six foot fence sticking out, if they want to put a four foot fence and they can put it wherever they want, that's better. But that's the analysis that you're, you're doing, what's the better zoning alternative? Thing that's permitted or the thing that is being sought in the variance? That's always the, that's always the balancing. In the end, it's what is the better zoning alternative?
And just to add to, bringing it back the ten feet, as we've agreed to, is going to add additional landscaping on the exterior of the fence along the streetscape, too, that otherwise wouldn't be there if we did put a four foot fence all the way out.
For me, it's the landscaping, because you can have that fence hidden by some attractive landscaping.
Yeah, pretty much, you know, once it matures, it's, it's concealed, you don't see it from the outside.
I have a question, Craig?
Sure.
You spoke to the landscape, either inside the fence or outside the fence for a pool, correct?
Yes.
Well, what if we said you're going to have a ten foot setback for the fence, but you're going to be required to landscape along that fence?
You can set that, you can set that condition.
On the exterior of the fence, so it, it, it looks halfway decent, it doesn't look like, as Stacy said, a wall going down the, down the street, you'd have some landscape in it, would be probably more appropriate for the people that buy the lots across the street.
I would, I would recommend that that condition goes along with the setback ten foot, the set, the ten foot setback with the fence.
And, and appropriate landscaping, if you go down that, those houses that have been developed, yeah, they, they've put landscaping in in the twenty-five foot setback. But I'd, I'd never approve that landscaping that's been put in there.
But there is a requirement with the pools that it be so, the plannings have to be more mature?
Correct, there are, there are dimensional sizes for the landscaping that's required as part of the pool ordinance, so they're going to have to meet that. There's a planting schedule, doesn't have the species, but it has like the number of, the types of shrubs, trees, you know, bushes.
At some point, I'd like to see that schedule, if you can provide that, I don't, I don't need it right now, but provide it to me, because there's...
It's, it's straightforward in the ordinance.
Yeah, there's no uniformity going down that New York Avenue.
Well, remember, none of those other houses have gotten variances for the front yards on Velveño, so they just have a normal landscaping requirement.
But they have a landscaping requirement on New York in a setback, right?
There's a buffer requirement on New York.
That's right.
That was set forth by the planning board.
That's right, so I'd, I'd be interested at some point, you know, to do it now, but I'd be interested in seeing the language that speaks to that landscaping along New York Avenue.
I will send that to you.
Thank you.
But Mr. Levin, to your point, we would, the, the landscaping that we are talking about, we would propose on the exterior of that fence, mature landscaping in order to mask that.
I, I understand.
Okay.
I'm just kind of doing a little retro.
Sure, understand.
I did.
I have a curiosity question, just so better understand the development, because you have the restrictions of Highland beaches in here, and it talks about with fences, how they're subject to the restrictions of the architectural design guidelines. I'm just curious if, you know, if the fence fits those restrictions for the development.
Believe the answer to that is, in terms of the fencing?
Mm-hmm.
I believe it does, because I don't, I, I can't definitively answer that. I don't think there's any issue with that at, at this point, but, but I guess better to not give you any sort of misleading information, I can't definitively say that.
Okay, just curious.
But if there's an issue, I think we're, we're gonna have to deal with that, because we can't violate the covenants. We can't violate the covenants, so I mean, even if we were to get approval here, if something that's not allowed there, we're out of luck.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a good question, it's just not one that we have any authority over. But I guarantee that you've asked that immediately after this meeting. We're gonna be reading those covenants very carefully.
No, that's okay.
No pressure.
Did this go through Architectural Review Committee yet?
I'm sorry?
Did this go through the, the, I thought they had Architectural Review Committee for this development?
No, I don't believe...
Maybe it's just one member.
What's that?
There may just be one member at this point.
Well, well, number, number one says fences have to be reviewed by the committee.
Yeah.
Does? It's okay, sorry.
Karen's usually the one yelling at everybody.
I make a lot of noise up here, so I don't have my mic on all the time. Planting and removal of trees and shrub are required, review and approval of plans by the committee listed on page II. And it says page eighteen in the application materials for that development.
Page seventeen says, "No building, fence, or other improvements shall be commenced, erected, or maintained without doing it." Now, I, I didn't read the whole thing, I'm just...
Right. So we're gonna have to go through that process, which we will do, as, yeah, we're gonna have to do it, we're not getting around it or attempting to.
But it's not a relevant consideration.
It's not, right, it's not here, yeah.
Well, I don't say it's not relevant, it's not a defining, I mean, I guess if you were trying to look for a neighborhood scheme, sometimes I guess it could be relevant, but it's, it's not determinative.
It's between them and the HOA, it's not, it's not a zoning issue.
Yeah. Okay, is there any, anything else? All right, so normally I frame the motion for you, but I, when I'm, when the motion is other than just approving what's requested, I kind of back off and let you guys give me some idea of what motion you want to be made. My impression is that the most useful motion to be made is a motion to approve it ten feet back from the road. But, you know, I, I don't want to decide that for you, so if someone's giving me some indication, and then if you'd say that, I'll do the usual thing where I...
Ten feet back from the road with proper landscape.
Okay, so you'd like to hear that, you'd like to give that motion a shot?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Ten feet back from the road with proper landscape.
Exterior.
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 Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna go, I heard what she said, but I'm gonna do it my way, when I do it.
Is that where the, the line is right now that we go twenty-five feet out to? My question is, when we go ten feet up, is it from that line that's right there, we've gone back ten feet?
Yeah, we're, we're taking it from the end line on Velveño, back ten feet closer.
Okay, just where it was already going across.
It's ten feet from the lot line, which will be effectively fifteen feet from the curb.
Well, but where were they, they were already coming in, how many feet?
It'll, they were coming in zero feet, it'll be ten feet.
Oh, I thought they were coming in...
Hold on, wait, stop. There's the right, five foot right of way, so I, I believe it's ten feet in from the property line, which will appear to be fifteen feet, because there's a curb, has, is five feet beyond the property line, because there's a five foot right of way, is that correct, Craig?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the correct measurement is from the right of way line, but you can't physically see that, so everyone likes the measure from the curb face. In that case, it's fi, it's approximately five feet to the right of way line from the curb face, and you're, you're, you're setting it back an additional ten from that.
You're going fifteen feet from the curb line?
From the curb, yeah, you'll be fifteen.
I, I work, I work from lot lines, and the fence is going to be ten feet from their front lot line.
Yeah, I was, I was helping him out envision it, because there's no physical marker on the, on the right of way line.
So the motion...
Mr. King, it, we were, my client was misunderstood where we were at. He thought we were moving it ten feet back from the right of way, essentially another five feet from where it is, not the ten.
I did clarify that when it was first said, so, okay.
Ten feet from the curb. I was expecting it to be ten feet from the curb.
I thought you might be, that's why I did clarify that the first time it was said, but that's okay, I understand you misunderstood, but I, I, I wanted to make sure that's what you, remember I said, so then it's going to be ten feet from the property line, it's going to look like fifteen feet overall, that's, I tried to, that's okay, all right. So I think the, the applicant's proposal is to be five feet, move it back five feet from the property line, which will give a visual appearance of being ten feet from the curb.
And that would allow five feet in front of the fence for planning?
Okay, and, and it'll, it'll go, it'll stick out from the structure twenty feet, not the fifteen I said before.
Right. Yes.
I'd just like to add that a parked vehicle sticks out eighteen feet. So when looking from Baltimore Avenue down the block, a parked car would stick out eighteen feet.
From Brooklyn, you mean from the front, right when you're looking down?
Yeah, looking down Velveño, yes.
All right, so now your analysis is slightly different, but similar. The alternatives you're considering is to run the risk of a four foot fence going all the way out to the curb line, or having a six foot fence, strike that. A four foot fence going all the way out to the...
They're looking at the plan.
Hold on, I'm gonna mess up my record, I don't mind you talking, but, you're all right? A, having a four foot fence that goes all the way out to the lot line, or a six foot fence that comes back from the lot line five feet, that will give the appearance of being ten feet to the curb, and having substantial landscaping on the outer side of the fence. So you need to, that's what you're weighing, and that's why you get the big bucks. So I, I do, Mr. Public raised his hand, and I think it's appropriate, normally I would not, just people say goodbye at the apple, but he specifically spoke on the assumption that it was ten feet, and I want to give him a chance to talk about that. I think that's appropriate, because we, we changed the playing field on him a bit. If you don't mind, Madam Chair, I do have a chance. Mr. Cochran, you remain under oath.
Thank you. Materially different, five feet back versus ten feet back, and I would be opposed to a six foot fence five feet back.
Okay, if we have a four foot fence, where does the landscaping go?
There isn't.
There isn't.
No, they have to have it.
It would be inside.
Well, we could have it inside.
But it would be inside.
Have to be inside the fence line.
Visually, I, my opinion is it would look better on the outside.
I agree. The landscaping should be outside the fence, whatever it takes.
Madam Chair, when can we offer an amendment to the...
Well, you're gonna vote on the application as presented, so...
The application presented would be at...
So they're presenting a five-foot setback from what's shown on their, the plan that's in front.
Okay, so a change from what they originally proposed.
Yeah, we were discussing a 10-foot setback. And he did not want to follow through with that, so we're voting on a five-foot setback.
And I'm just gonna say, I think it's gonna be like a wall, regardless of where you put the plantings. You're gonna have a six-foot wall. Down, over, and back. It's gonna be, I think it's gonna ruin the streetscape coming down, coming down the road, and even across the street when they eventually build.
My understanding was that it was gonna be 10-foot setback. And if we're gonna do, if we're gonna do where the, where the current fence is drawn on the plans.
Setback is a very specific term. Setback is measured from a lot line, not from the curb line. I gave you a visual, when I talked about the curb line, that was a visual, so you can get a sense of how far back it was. Setback is from the right-of-way line, which is five foot from the curb line.
Okay.
So they're offering another five. So it'll essentially be 10 foot from the curb line, is where they're proposing the...
That wasn't my understanding. My understanding was the fence, from the current fence line is on the, on the drawings, was gonna be 10 foot back.
10 foot back from what?
From... From the current drawings.
That's what we, so I asked if they would, if they would concede that. They initially said yes, but the applicant's saying they misunderstood that, and thought we were talking about from the curb line. So now, now he has revised his decision and says he's going to set it back five feet. So it's where it's shown on the plan, move it back five feet. That's what's being proposed.
That's not my understanding, but it's okay.
That's correct. Okay, I just want to make sure that we're...
So we've, we've come full circle on, from, from zero-foot setback to 10-foot setback to five-foot setback.
So it would be 10 feet from the curb line, and it would allow five feet of planting space in front of the fence, towards Valvento, facing Valvento, which is plenty to conceal the fence.
Or you're gonna see a four-foot fence, just a wall of white.
Well, they're still gonna put plantings around it.
Not on the outside.
But then that's their, you know, at least there'll be, it won't be a wall.
Well, that would be...
I mean, most people have, the person next to them has a four-foot fence. So, you know, I'm not...
I'm not sure that's...
But those plantings would have to be on the inside. You'd still see the white fence.
That's right.
I'm not sure the person next to them has a four-foot fence, just to be clear.
Well, it's a pool.
No, I'm just, I just don't want to get my record all flummoxed with things that aren't... The fence next door to them stops at the property line, so it's allowed, it's not, I'm sorry, it stops at the structure. So it's allowed to be six feet. My guess is at six foot. I don't know if it's six or four. My guess is that it's six, because it's, it's in the side yard and not in the front yard.
So, I mean, I have children, and there's no place to play. If I pull it back another five feet, I'm really, I'm shrinking my yard. I've got no backyard. So that's, that's my dilemma.
No, you can have it at four feet. You just want it at six feet with...
For four feet, I would put it out at the setback and plant inside the fence.
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, that would be, you would still see the white wall.
He's from the public, you can talk to him, unless he's from like out of town.
I just, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna make sure that where we're planting complies with the ordinance. We have to. So...
If you want, if you're from the public, we reopen to let Mr. Cochran speak. I guess if you have something to say, I don't know anyone's interested in shutting you down.
Martin Van Walsum, 320...
Hold on, I get stuck, hold on.
Van Walsum, V-A-N, space, W-A-L, S-U-M, 329 Congress Street.
329 Congress?
The ordinance requires that the plantings be on the property line. So it doesn't really matter where the fence is. The plantings have to be a four-foot barrier on the property line.
Were you gonna read something?
Mm-hmm, I can if you want.
It actually only requires it on the side and rear of the lot line.
Correct, it's on the rear and the side, but in this case, you have three frontages, so we're talking about, right?
Right.
So even if it were a four-foot fence, it would still have to have landscaping on the property line.
Everyone, the fundamental problem here, and it's news to me, is that you can have a solid four-foot fence in the front yard in Cape May. I did not know that until, you know, 20 minutes ago. I never believed you could have a solid four-foot fence in a front yard in Cape May. That's the fundamental problem. So now you're finding the best alternative to that fundamental problem. And while we talk today about the year review and potential zoning changes, I think we should discuss solid fences in front yards in Cape May.
All swimming pools shall provide a four-foot wide planted green space along the rear and side property lines within the rear yard to increase infiltration, add additional buffering, improve aesthetics, and provide space for grading and the conveyance of stormwater.
Can you tell us where your, what the code number is?
I think it's in Mr. Earl's review letter.
Yeah.
It's directly in there.
Thank you.
It's the landscaping requirement that I cited. It's comment number...
195-2009?
Nope, we're in the zoning code. So it's section 525-624A, I mean, A4, 62A4. That's the landscaping provisions of the, for the pools.
So as I understand the ordinance, you would not be able to put a fence that is surrounding a pool on the property line. It would need to be set back at least four feet from the property line to allow for the landscape buffer.
In a rear yard and a side yard.
In a rear yard and a side yard, I agree.
This is a front yard.
I understood that.
Technically.
Yeah.
Hope it helps.
Thank you.
Close to public. Close public.
Motion to close to the public.
Okay, close to the public.
Someone make a motion.
I'll make a motion, we vote on this as it sits.
Vote as it sits?
As it is.
We're gonna close to the public first, so we're gonna...
It is, it's close to the public.
Okay, there you go. We won't do a motion. The chair's discretion.
Motion that we vote on as it is right now.
All right, can I hear the motion, because I don't know what it is.
I think we're in a discussion...
You're still discussing, okay. I couldn't hear.
You're voting on what was presented originally?
Right.
Or what we've discussed about moving it back slightly?
What was presented originally. And I'll say right now that I would be against it, so that then it would be a four-foot wall. I'd rather see a low wall all the way out than a six-foot that stops intermittently.
So there's a, we're gonna, you know, by the book, there is a motion to consider, to approve the application as proposed in the original application, which is a six-foot fence to the property line. That's the motion that's been made, okay? Subject to the conditions outlined by the Board Engineer. And that motion is looking for a second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Walsh, seconded by Ms. Sheen. Mr. Levin?
No.
Mrs. Knatch?
No.
Ms. Sheen?
No.
Mr. Walsh?
No.
Mr. Zexer?
No.
Mr. Venuto?
No.
Mrs. Werner?
No.
In fairness to the applicant, they very clearly made a request that you consider the six-foot fence five feet back from the front property line. So I'm gonna ask you to vote on that. How you vote's up to you, I'm not saying you have to grant it. I just think it'd be unfair that they specifically revised their, you did, right? You specifically revised your application to indicate that it's five feet from the front lot line. I'd ask someone to make that motion, please second it, and then vote on that. If you vote no, I, it's okay, that's your decision. But I don't wanna, I don't want to run into a problem where we didn't vote on the thing they asked for.
Now, is this gonna be, like, we can always just change it after we vote if it doesn't pass to what maybe the applicant wants? Is that what we're gonna do from now on?
We did it beforehand.
I'll answer to him. Actually, I perhaps shouldn't have let you make the first motion, because I generally, my general policy on changes to application is that if they reduce the impact of the variance, that's appropriate in a zoning application. So I don't let people change their whole plan, because that's not fair to the public. But if they make an effort to alter their proposal to decrease the variance, then that should be voted on by the board, because that's the point of coming to the board. You get feedback, you listen to the public, you try to meet their demands, and you can alter your application and revise it to try to minimize the impact of the variance you're seeking. So it's perfectly appropriate for them to do that, and we do it routinely. So, and if the answer's no, then the answer's no, but it might be yes. But that's the whole purpose of having an open hearing and hearing from the public, is to improve the application. So if they improve it, we vote on it.
All right, I have a question. Anybody have a scale? What dimension are you looking at? Well, the question is, if you move 10 feet from the property line, which is what the drawing shows, if you move it from the current drawing, 10 foot back...
Five foot back.
I'm asking 10 foot back, that's what we originally talked about.
Well, that's...
And I know they, and they changed their mind.
They conceded to five foot, and that's all they've offered. I recommended 10.
Right.
They did not, they don't like 10, they want to go with five. Mr. King just indicated that that was their concession, and that was what you should be voting on. So I don't want to be talking about 10 if we're talking about five.
Correct.
The only thing they've offered is five.
From the property line.
From the right-of-way line, correct, property line.
That's the application, they revised their application to that. I'd ask you to vote on it. If you want to vote no, that's up to you, but just vote on their revised application. That way, if there's an appeal, they, they can't say we didn't let them revise their application, which they are permitted to do, in my opinion, as long as it's an improvement.
Can you do the verbiage on it? I'll make that...
Sure, it's a motion, it's a motion to grant the revised application to have the front setback, the front fence moved back five feet in from the property line at a height of six feet, subject to the variant, subject to the condition that there be substantial landscaping on the five-foot area outside of the fence, but on the property.
Okay.
Okay, can we have that?
I'll make that motion again.
Okay, Mr. Walsh?
I'll second it.
Mr. Zexer, second.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Mrs. Knatch?
No.
Ms. Sheen?
No.
Mr. Walsh?
No.
Mr. Zexer?
Yes.
Mr. Venuto?
No.
Mrs. Werner?
Yes.
I got 4-3, no?
I've got 4-0.
4-0.
4-3, no, yeah. Projected 4-3, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, from here, 10.
It was obvious, it was the sense of the board. I was like, I was trying to save them, I offered them 10 feet.
I was just trying to understand, like...
I didn't want to be saved.
Well, there's HOA requirement.
Right, right.
Right. There's certain HOA requirements. The problem is, they can do a four-foot fence all the way to the property.
No, they can't. You gotta buy our ordinance, they need a buffer zone, so they can go, so four-foot, and then... The planning has to be on the outside.
Is from the curb back in, five foot. Then they have to go, and they could go to the... So what they're saying is... See, they can, they can go from there, back, that's the five-foot right there. So they can go right to the property, so the four-foot fence. And they don't need it, they don't need it. Here's their property line, the pin. And from the pin to the curb, which is a setback, is five feet. So they can go right to here with four-foot fence.
It's a tricky one.
They screw themselves. To me, but it's less than two evils, less than six evils. There's no good outcome. It's really gonna, really gonna show when that's constructed. The solution would be not to orient the house, not to orient the house just like the rest of the house. Yeah. It's the only house on the street that's gonna be...
You got a glass of wine?
I'm getting my glass tonight.
Yeah, we need a glass of wine.
See, the other house that we approved a couple of years back, that was on a corner. That worked. He could've done the same thing. They get greedy over, they get greedy over feet. He should've given them that.
But this is still a very significant...
Every single one, I'm like, something different. Fences and the pools, I mean, everybody wants to know.
This is his ability. Yeah, he knows. More consumption, I was gonna tell your architect to sharpen his pencil, you know? They make this fit. You can make it fit on the property.
Our next application, and I apologize, I'm not going to say your names, is for 502 West Perry Street, block 1032, lots 2.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members. My name's Ron Gilzounis, appearing on behalf of Anna Diaz and Jose Granados, owners of Unit 3 of the West Perry condominium. This property is 502 West Perry Street. It consists of a three-unit condominium in the R2 zone. The proposal this evening is to demolish the existing detached garage and to reconstruct the new, the storage structure in the same place. This will trigger variances for expansion of a non-conforming use, because once that's torn down, we reconstruct it, that's the expansion, and side yard setback for an accessory structure. All other conditions on the site are pre-existing and will not be affected by this project. To my right, of course, is Mr. John Halbruner from the Highland Group. He's our engineer. He'll be providing the expert testimony. Of course, to my left is Ms. Anna Diaz. If we could have them sworn in, please.
Do each of you, will please raise your right hand?
And Mr. Earl's remains under oath. Do each of you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so you got?
I do.
Thank you.
John, briefly credentials for the record.
Sure, lessons in New Jersey, both an engineer and an architect. Been practicing both fields in Cape May County for going on 30 years.
both fields in Cape May County for going on 30 years. I've been before this board on numerous occasions. I routinely provide the study of client testimony before putting as many boards throughout the cabinet. Thank you. Madam Chair?
Yes.
acknowledged as an expert. Thank you. Okay, John, why don't you take us through existing conditions on the site and this evening's proposal?
As you mentioned in your first statement, we're dealing with... Green's on. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, here we go. Good. Property is developed with two principal buildings. One that's closest to Perry Street is a two-family home, and towards the rear of the property is a single-family home. And in between the two is a detached garage that is the principal topic of this application this evening. We're on a 50-foot wide by 150-foot deep lot in the R2 zoning district. There are multiple nonconformities of the existing property, none of which are going to be exasperated by the proposed development this evening. We have nonconforming front yard, I'm sorry, nonconforming furniture width of the lot, where 60 feet is required, 50 feet exists and will remain unchanged. We have nonconforming lot coverage where 40% maximum is permitted, 51% exists, and that, again, will remain unchanged. The garage that is the real subject of this application has several nonconformities, namely its side yard setback, where four feet would be required for that accessory structure. We have 0.28 feet setback. We also have, and then there's some standard separation between accessory structures on the property. We have a shed that's two feet away from the garage that has remained. And I'm not sure how the board interprets this, but we have adjacent property with adjacent garage that's about one foot away from us. But in any event, I think the variance for the noncompliance setback between accessory structures would apply between the garage we have on site and existing shed. None of those existing nonconforming conditions will change as a result. What we're proposing to do is take down a truly dilapidated, dangerous, and collapsed historic garage and reconstruct it in the exact same footprint to the exact same dimensions and height and in the exact same location. The application's been before the HPC. We have received the demolition approval for the original garage, and we've received conceptual approval for the replacement of the garage in the same location, same footprint, and similar materials in its reconstruction. Now, the board may be asking themselves, if you're going to tear down the garage and build a new one, can't you make it in a conforming location? And the answer is, yeah, we really could. HPC actually requested that we maintain it in this current location because it's more historically accurate in the context of how garages were constructed for these types of homes in the historic district. They actually requested it, and it's written in the resolution that they would prefer to keep it in this location. Hence, we're here before you this evening seeking the variance to, for the side yard setback. We would need the, be here anyway for the reconstruction by virtue of us demolishing and then reconstructing the garage. So it sounds as though we wouldn't be here this evening, but the side yard setback relief that we are seeking, which looks like it's unusually small, because it is, might have the potential to be ameliorated, but we're seeking to keep it in the same location to maintain the historic fabric of the HPC, of the historic district in the HPC's request. Now, at a very technical level, we require a use variance for the demolition and hence reconstruction of this garage. It's actually, it's a D2 variance. It's an extension or expansion of a nonconforming use. The proofs for a D2 variance are a little different than the use variances that are the D1 variance, where you're looking to introduce a new use to a property that doesn't already exist. Our burden of proof that we must demonstrate to you isn't that the site is particularly suited, or there are special reasons for this use. It's more that the site is able to accommodate the expansion of the use. In this case, the site can absolutely accommodate it because it's been part of the site and has been for 100 years. So insofar as that's concerned, we're not introducing the new use newly. We're simply looking to preserve what has been there for some 100 years. So I think for that reason alone, the positive criteria under, for use variance would be satisfied. Furthermore, we do actually have a, one of the purposes of municipal land law that are being advanced by the preservation of, in this location, and that is, again, to promote the general welfare of the public by maintaining the fabric of the historic district and maintaining the typical development pattern of detached garages in these historic homes. So for those reasons, I believe this positive criteria for the use variance are clearly satisfied. Now, with any variance, we must also demonstrate the negative. There can be substantial impairment to the zone plan, the intent, or to the public good. Again, this is not a newly created condition. It's not a newly created building. It exists, has existed, and we're simply looking to maintain it. We actually could, piece by piece, replace it in place, but that doesn't make any sense. It must make more sense to demolish it, reconstruct it. When it's done, same footprint, same height, but not in any dilapidated condition. So I spoke through the use variance we need. We also need some bulk variances. Again, that setback I keep referring to, to maintain that same setback requires a side yard setback relief along with the nonconforming separation between this building and the adjacent property's garage and our shed on the existing property. The positive criteria for granting that relief, and I would think that gets advanced under the C2 criteria, is that we're, again, preserving the character of not only the neighborhood, but this property and preservation of the fabric of the historic district. The negative criteria for that is, again, we're not creating a new condition. This condition exists. The side yard setback to the neighbor is to a garage that's one foot away from us. We're certainly not adversely impacting the neighbor by us rebuilding the garage in the same footprint. So for those reasons, I believe the setback variances can be granted under the C2 criteria, which leaves us with the nonconforming lot width and lot coverage conditions, which would be advanced under the C1 criteria. They're existing conditions. They're legally existing. We're doing nothing to exasperate or increase them, and I believe that we had no opportunity practically to make them conforming. To force conformity would, in fact, create an undue hardship upon the applicant. And for those reasons, I think the positive criteria for the C1 criteria is thus established. And for the reasons I've already presented, the same negative criteria, I think, is also overwhelmingly satisfied. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, John, thank you. You don't leave me much to listen to further testimony, and you make my job a lot easier. But I do have a couple of questions. You reference the HPC resolution. That is the concept approval. That was not provided to the board. They were given the resolution for the demolition certificate.
Got you.
The resolution number and the paragraph that you showed me earlier that talks about reconstructing the garage, if you could read that into the record, please.
I'd be happy to. Help me find where the resolution number is on this, though.
Page two at the bottom.
Page two at the bottom.
Bottom paragraph, I think.
I have, I'm sorry, HPC's resolution number 2024, Act 18.
Well, we have the conceptual.
That granted the approval for demolition of the existing garage. Okay.
Thank you.
So we gave the board the notice of conceptual approval that the HPC provided to the board secretary? Everybody has?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's my fault. I told us...
Okay. It's not a resolution. It's a...
It was the conceptual.
The framing.
It wasn't in the resolution, but it's in the conceptual approval thing. So we just want to get that in there because it wasn't in the resolution. There were conditions attached to demolition, and that wasn't one of them, so.
The title of the document is Notice of Conceptual Approval, under the applicant's name and with a property address noted. The date of the HPC hearing was May 20, 2024. And I will note that one of the paragraphs they have in describing it is, "The HPC voted unanimously in favor of conceptual approval for the proposed garage. The HPC's conceptual approval incorporates the recommendation that the replacement structure be permitted to remain in its current configuration on the lot. The HPC acknowledges that maintaining that placement may give rise to variance relief for zoning purposes, but the restoration of the garage in its current location would offer a benefit to the historic district by preserving aspects of this historic site."
I'll move to admit that notice into the record. I think that Karen has a copy of that.
Yes, the HPC sends it to me, so then I distribute it to the board if you didn't have it in Europe. So we did make sure everybody saw it, and I emailed it to you, too.
And then the other point, John, I, you know, it, these are all existing. So we're asking for variances. They're only for a duration of time for when this, because this building has the right to stay where it is. It's protected by law as nonconforming structure in the setback. We tear it down, that's what actually gives rise to the need for the variance.
Correct.
Which is to re-put it back into the side yard and to expand the nonconformity on the lot. But it's only for a short period of time, while it's demolished and then until it's reconstructed.
Yeah, well, it certainly makes me question the use of the term expanding the nonconforming use. I realize from the legal perspective, that's probably accurate. But we're not really expanding it. We're temporarily removing, put it right back. It's like an instantaneous switch.
And as you indicated, all the reasons for that, you've already discussed and as illustrated by the HPC notice.
Correct.
Is to, really gets to the heart of the historic district, and that's to preserve the character and feel. And that includes being able to see this from the street. When you look down the driveway as you're coming down the street, you see this historic configuration of the driveway, and at the end of that driveway is the carriage house or the barn or the shed.
Correct.
With the two doors that open up.
Right up, it's the property line, usually right next door to the neighbor's one. They'd be side by side. And that's exactly what this configuration is.
And you have the backing of the HPC on that, and you also have the knowledge of the board members of the community and the nature and character of the district. Do all those factors outweigh the detriments involved in deviating from the zoning ordinance?
Yes, I think, yeah. As I mentioned before, what are the true negatives that are occurring here? I really see none, let alone do they, would they rise to a level of being a substantial detriment?
And this is the best approach to preserving this particular older structure is to just simply recreate it in place as it appeared.
Correct.
When it was newly constructed.
It's, most buildings, you might say, why don't you just rebuild it piece by piece? I'm not exaggerating. If you touched this one, it would fall down, and we'd be back here describing why we need to rebuild something that fell down while we're trying to reconstruct it.
We've had that happen. So I think that's all we have. If anyone has any questions from the applicant or Mr. Halbruner.
I just have one quick question. It's just going to be used for storage, correct?
Correct.
No heater, air conditioning put in?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, we can have your report, Craig?
Sure. I would like to summarize my report dated October 7, 2024. This project is located in the R2 low-medium density residential district. You've heard testimony from the applicants indicating what they're proposing to do, demolish and reconstruct the existing storage garage on the property. I'll roll right into the completeness review. Under the checklist for C and D variances, they asked for several waivers. I supported the waivers from item number 26, 27, 31, and 33. The two that I recommended being provided as condition of approval, item number 19 and 28, and they deal with topography, grading and drainage, and design calculations. Now, this application normally wouldn't trigger stormwater review. However, this neighborhood has very prevalent stormwater issues. And because they're over on lot coverage, so 40% is permitted, they're, I think they're at 51%, we asked any applicant that comes in a variance in this neighborhood to provide a stormwater system to try and hope the overall stormwater drainage in the neighborhood. So that should be a condition of approval. With that recommendation, I did support deeming this application complete. The applicant indicated there's a bunch of existing nonconformities. So the, there are two principal uses on the site. There's a two-family detached structure at the front oriented closest to West Perry Street, and then there's a single-family dwelling that's located at the rear. So the single fam, only single-family dwellings are permitted in the R2 district. The fact that there's two principal uses on the site creates the nonconformity, as well as the fact that there's a two-family detached structure on the site. So all of those are nonconforming situations. They're existing. They're not touching that. This is an accessory structure that relates to those. The lot is also not sufficient in width and frontage. 60 foot is a requirement, 50 foot exists. And I just talked about the lot coverage. 40% is the maximum permitted. They're at 51%. This doesn't result in any additional impervious coverage, but it is an existing, it becomes a, it is a existing and proposed nonconforming situation at 51%. With regards to the demolition and reconstruction, you're demolishing a structure that has a side yard setback requirement of four foot, where 0.28 foot is existing and proposed. And the distance from the adjoining building, there's a minimum requirement of 10 feet, where there's less than one foot that's proposed between that and the, the structure to, on the adjoining lot. So those are the existing conditions that are going to be reconfirmed by the reconstruction of this, this new garage. So that's the summary of the variances. I'll move on to page 5 of 6. My general review comments should be conditions of approval. We ask that the zoning table be revised to reflect the comments in the review memorandum and indicate all variances that were indicated in my review. Item number two, we asked for a couple more setback dimensions to be provided on the plan. And they asked for the variance, but it just needs to be conformed, dimensioned on the plan. Item three, I just talked about in the completeness items, but that's the, asking them to provide a stormwater system connected to the shed. Item number four, we've asked them to provide revised parking calculations that are done in accordance with the residential site improvement standards. I believe they conform, but they need to be provided on the plan. Item number five, they've asked for a waiver from providing a landscaping and vegetation plan. We would just like confirmation that they're not, that they're preserving all the existing vegetation and there's no changes. So that note could be added to the plan. Six is our standard condition that they have to, we evaluate the sidewalk and replace any sidewalk that's found deficient after construction. Item number seven is our standard condition that they have to post an inspection escrow and that their certificate of occupancy is tied to an acceptance of improvements within. And then item number eight, they have to comply with the requirements of the Shade Tree Commission, Fire Department, and Public Works Department. We did receive those review memos. Fire Department recommended approval with no conditions. 101824. Is that the only one we got? I have here.
Shade Tree.
I got, I'm sorry, the HPC is in between. Sorry. The Public Works Department dated 101124, no comments, and Shade Tree Commission also recommended approval. It says per attached email message, which is on the back of this, and it said, "There are three trees on the property. That being said, they all have condominant trunks, and although visually pleasing, they are not significant enough to warrant preservation." So it doesn't sound like there's any conditions related to the trees, but...
Do those trees need to be removed?
We're not anticipating the need for them to be removed, no.
You're not going to, you're not going to remove them, the trees?
I don't foresee the need to, no. The one thing that would cause us the need to remove is if they interfere with the reach for our system, that would be interesting. But we'll make efforts to avoid that.
Yeah, I have a problem with that because this is a tree city, and if we're going to take the trees down, and even though they said visually, they didn't have an arborist review it. I mean, I went through the shade tree, but my son who is an arborist, who's on West Cape May, he reviewed, he looked at the, he looked at them today.
Okay.
They really, they need to be protected and not taken down.
Yeah, there's no trees. I mean, I'm just talking to Ms. Diaz. There's no trees around, immediately around the garage.
There's one close, I have a picture, as of today.
So if we, if we...
It's close to it.
If we moved the garage, if we moved it, then it could affect the tree. If we rebuild the garage where it is, it will not affect the tree that's there.
But they have to take care of the roots. It's not, they can't just, because we've had this before with construction in town, and they put heavy equipment, and they damaged the roots, and then the trees die because they didn't take care of them.
We don't want the tree to die.
No.
Mr. Halbruner, can you agree to put some tree protection on your plan and make sure that...
Mr. Halbruner, can you agree to put some tree protection on your plan and make sure that the contractor?
We can, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are they going to access from Perry Street or from Congress Street going through there?
I would expect them to come from Congress Street. That would be the easiest path, but I don't, I don't know that I'm prepared to say we're going to restrict them to that.
Because you have a tree that's leaning across that entryway.
This is very light construction equipment involved with this. This is not a big building, this is not a big house. It's a very small, light frame garage.
Just worry about the heavy equipment going through.
So, once again, the project is located within the historic district. Just provide evidence of final approval. Comply with any and all applicable affordable housing requirements. And finally, should the board grant approval, you're required to revise the plans to address the conditions that the board sets and submit the requisite number of copies to the board engineer for review and approval. Any questions from the board?
Craig, store management, you're talking about gutters on the, on the garage?
It can be done either with gutters or there, there are, you can put a stone trap at the, at the drip line and capture it that way, but.
Okay. The reason I ask is, this, I mean, this garage is so close to the property line. I was wondering, could gutters even be installed on this garage without crossing over the property line?
Yeah, we might have to do something creative with this one, but I'll work with Mr. Halbruner to just address the stormwater.
And I believe historically, HPC would much prefer to see us not have the gutters on there.
So, we can work on something. It's, it's going to be a limited, I typically ask the applicants to comply with whatever overage that they have. So, the difference between the 40% and, and the 51% is, so it'll, it'll result in a small system.
Okay. Now, I understand, it's just that particularly flooding is an issue in this particular area, definitely needs to be addressed, so.
The potential exists even for us, rather than trying to capture the runoff from this particular garage, taking the full flood area from one of the existing buildings.
Yeah.
The idea is to offset that now, so.
We'll capture it off an impervious surface and, and recharge it.
Okay. Especially with being as close to the neighbor's property as well, don't want it to contribute anything further than.
Yeah, I've, I've been pretty consistent in recommending stormwater systems in this neighborhood and very familiar with the problems.
I, I just want to be a lawyer about it and go on record for some future application. I'm not 100% sure a D2 variance is required in this application. It may be, it may not be, but if it comes up again, I want to reserve the right to revisit that, just as Mr. Halbruner mentioned, because for reasons he mentioned, I, I, Craig and I had this conversation earlier, and it, it may require a D2 variance. But if I really, really thought about it, I'm not sure it does. I'm not sure what's expanding. But I, in this context, I guess it makes sense, but I, it's being torn down, but I, I still have some doubts in my own. I try to be intellectually honest, and I don't want to be captured later in some big hotel project, and there's some question about whether replacing accessory, replacing an accessory structure triggers a D2 expansion of a non-conforming use. I'm not 100% sure about that. It may, and it's perfectly reasonable to vote on it tonight that way, and I'm not saying it's legally wrong. I'm just saying I have the same doubts that Mr. Halbruner expressed.
We applied out of an abundance of, of caution.
And appreciate that, and you might have been able to really fight on that, so I appreciate you.
Get here and find out.
No, no, I appreciate you doing it, and it's appropriate. I just, just have some, some doubts.
I'd like to open up to anyone within 200 feet of the property. If you wish to speak. Anyone beyond 200 feet of the property. And we'll close it to the public.
If there's no more discussion, the motion I'd recommend being made is a motion to grant the application as proposed, subject to the conditions outlined by the board engineer, including a condition that the trees existing will be protected and a plan to that effect will be provided to Mr. Hurlis. And that's the motion I recommend being made, but how you vote is up to you.
I make the motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sheehan, seconded by Mr. Ledwin.
Mr. Ledwin?
Yes.
Mrs. Knatch?
Yes.
Ms. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Zexer?
Yes.
Mr. Vannudo?
Yes.
Mrs. Werner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, board members.
That the conditions are met when we, that we have approved.
What do you mean, conditions aren't being met?
Norm, give me.
I'll give you a good example. We've, we've talked about this before. The O'Hara Beach Club.
Right. I've requested that they fix that.
Okay.
Provide the doors. I have not gotten a affirmative response from them, but if they, if they fail to do that, then we'll send code enforcement out.
I've never seen that door closed.
There isn't any.
There, there aren't any.
There aren't any.
So.
They've said.
It's Ohana.
They're speaking of the Ohana Beach Club. They were required to put doors, like carriage doors, on the front. And they never, they never provided those. I reached out to them and they failed.
Is that the one where you went under the building?
Yeah, right.
It looks better without them, but yeah.
Well, I, at one point, I was told that the door was on order, so I never heard that it came in, but we can find out.
That was going to be the power gate that when you pulled up, it opened or something?
Yes. Remember, we had, we had long.
We were right about that, we were right about that. That worked out really well. You don't even see the cars under there, that.
But that's not, that's not the point. I guess my, my thought is that if they aren't going to do it, then they ought to come back here and ask us to relieve them of that requirement.
I have followed up with that, so I will, I will reach out to them one more time. If they fail to address it, then we'll, we'll.
I'm just, I guess one of the things that I'm interested in is, who, where, where do the responsibilities lie with?
So, me.
Okay.
After you, after you approve things, they perfect the plan, they submit it to me. I verify that the plan matches the conditions of approval. I look at the resolution, I look at my notes for each application, and make sure the plan, then I sign the plan. I bring it to the, the city, the board, the board secretary signs the plan, as well as the chairperson. Once that happens, they post an inspection escrow. I follow up on behalf of the board and the city and verify that every, every, uh, construction project complies with your approval. So, I'm the police officer for the board.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just curious about where, your role versus the zoning.
We have talked about that, and I, and that was a special circumstance. I, I'm not aware that there's widespread non-compliance going on.
I just want to.
Yeah, that was.
I'm just curious.
I think, in my experience, Craig captures more than any other en, board engineer I, I've encountered. I mean, he really does do, he makes them crazy and makes them comply with the plans. But sometimes, if there's something that, that, that it's holding up, it's unreasonably holding up a project, like a door is on back order and the rest of the thing is built, and they have a bunch of tenants coming in, you can grant a temporary CO based on the condition that that get fulfilled within a certain period of time. And if it doesn't, it doesn't, if, it's not our, the disconnect is that, it's not, Craig can't issue violations. The construction office has to issue them.
Something that's, something that's occurred, I used to have a hammer. It used to, it used to be called a performance guarantee. The state has, has lessened the responsibility of developers providing performance guarantees. The, the improvements that we can make them provide a performance guarantee is significantly less than it was 10 years ago. And that, holding on to their money used to be the impetus for them following through and completing everything. That hammer is gone now. So then, it gets into an enforcement issue at the end, as opposed to giving them their money back.
Right.
And that money, giving them their money back was the big carrot.
I think that my, my interest is, where does your responsibility stop? And does zoning pick it up, or does construction pick it up?
With.
We answered your question, though.
Yeah, any board projects, I'm ultimately responsible for. So if there's any issues, please let me know.
Okay.
He's, just to give it this way, he's responsible for compliance with the plans, okay? But once the, he, once he says to them, hey, there's supposed to be a door and it's not there, okay? Craig has no ability to make them do anything. They have to issue, the, the, and I don't, I'm not involved in that. That's the construction official and the city attorney. So all that stuff that goes on with locale and all that, all those violations, that is, that's the city attorney and the construction department.
So, so, to make it, make sure I understand, once, if you find that they have not complied with the conditions of this board, then you turn it over to?
So they ask me, before the project is accepted, they ask me to do a final inspection.
Right.
And I issue a recommendation letter that gets sent down to the construction.
Okay, that's, so they're the enforcement.
Right, so they ultimately become the enforcement. They issue COs or don't issue COs.
Okay.
So you're clear, Craig didn't miss that there was no gate?
Yeah, they told me that it was on order when I.
Right, we've talked about it several times.
But, but other than that, I mean, when you said it, you, you gave the impression that there's rampant violations of our conditions. So besides that one, what?
Well, the other thing was like with Pittsburgh, too, with them not complying. I know they went with them and they said they red-stickered them.
Right.
But that was the code enforcement, that wasn't part of you.
That, that was construction related.
Right, okay.
You know, I was inspecting that, and I, you know, I was on, you know, it's, when they red-stickered it, you know, my first call was to figure out what, what happened. And then it was an interior, it was interior stuff. And typically, my site inspections are for the site work outside. I don't do, I'm not looking at plumbing and heating and where doors are and stuff like that. I do go through and make sure the proper amount of bedrooms are in there, or, you know, parking ma, proper amount of parking spaces are in the garage, those types of things. But I don't, I'm typically not in the building, I'm more doing the sites.
Right, so, so if they're putting like, if a garage is all sudden putting in heat and air conditioning and plumbing?
Right.
That's not you.
That typically gets flagged by the construction official or the zoning officer.
Okay.
Even more inside, I'm more outside.
Okay.
And then we get, and then typically during that process, we get an as-built survey of the improvements, and, and we look at that to verify that the setbacks are what they told us they're going to be.
And does, does the construction office then get as-bills? So they're required to produce as-bills?
So, there is a process, and it's typically followed, that, you know, you're, you're speaking about the one that, the one that happened, and we've, we've talked about that one, and then I'll follow up again, but I, I, to be honest with you, I, I think generally the process has ensured that your, whatever you guys set as conditions is followed through.
Since we're asking questions, Craig, tonight, this application on Valvento, every other house on that street was oriented to Valvento. This one now is oriented to Brooklyn. What made that, they can just change that orientation?
So they have, they have front yards. The only, the only condition that was set when the planning board approved that was they couldn't front on New York. They didn't say anything about Brooklyn.
Someone else could have turned their house around?
They could have easily turned their house on, on both ends.
Right.
Only on the ends were, was that the condition. Every other one had to be oriented towards Valvento. And then when you get to the other side of the street, when they start developing the other side of the street, you're going to see the same condition.
I remember, Craig, when we were on the planning board, there's, that motel that was taken down, back, down there by, I think it was, uh, First Avenue? Or Second Avenue? Down there on the, no, that, by the Beach Drive, the motel that was taken.
That there's two vacant lots for sale?
Yeah, there's three, yeah, there's three vacant lots. And we, I think we put it in that subdivision that it had to be oriented a certain way.
We've done that, we've done that on several, several different ones that have come in for variances. We've told them, there was one on Pittsburgh Avenue, where we said it, that the house had to be designed so that it, you know, even though that they were going to access it from the side street, the dead-end side street, we told them that it had to look like a front oriented towards Pittsburgh. So we've made those conditions before. And, and to be honest with you, that's, that's a very specific one, that initially, when they submitted the compliance plans, I rejected it. I was like, this doesn't look like a front, the front of a house. And I rejected it and they had to redesign it. So like, that's an example of what happens during this compliance review.
Right.
Question, part for Rich and part for Craig. Beach Avenue, is the time, time to file pass for the grand to do anything after we had? We denied, we denied the, you know, their, their variance request for, for the grand. You know, they still have the, the fire pits and the pool thing and stuff like that.
The patio with the fire pits.
45 days from whenever we publish the resolution.
Are we at our 40? So I guess my first que, okay, I, I was just wondering if we had hit our 45 days yet with that?
It's measured from when we publish the resolution, and I don't know when we publish the resolution.
Okay.
We publish the resolution the week after the meeting, generally. So, it's probably just about 45 days. Bruce is on it, I know that. Bruce Britton is on that. I, I definitely, was my job to make sure he knew what happened.
Okay.
He knows, and I'll, I'll make a note to remind him.
Okay, 'cause, and that's the other thing, and it touches on the issues we've talked about, compliance, people doing things. And it's one thing if there's, there's a process in, in place and construction is following after the work that we do, and, because that's the way the, the process is set up. But we've had situations where that doesn't happen. The Cove with, around, around the pool area, which I know Bruce did check on, it was taken care of. But I guess there's, obviously you have a process in place to make sure that that gets done, but that's out of the ordinary because they're not pulling construction permits. There's no one going out to follow up at that point. It's something that's coming from us. I mean, we're all going to know about Beach Avenue because we all pass it all the time. So we're all paying attention to that, and we're all paying attention to that. But the Cove and Beach Av, and the grand aren't going to be the only circumstances, probably. You know, there's going to be another one that comes in place. I mean, just what's your, what's the procedure, other than you keep a tickler file in your head to say, I'm going to make sure I, I keep track of those, of those projects and, and make sure that they?
So, any approval that the board grants, they go on a. So any approval that the board grants, they go on a list that I have, and then I, I share that with Karen. We track, so they're required to provide an inspection escrow. In some cases, I, I talked about a performance guarantee being the hammer. In some cases for subdivisions and site plans, we get that. So we do, we do track that. And when we, like, for instance, if we have a, a site plan that has a performance guarantee, just because we accept the project doesn't mean they get all their money back. We're allowed to still hold fifteen percent of what their performance guarantee is and make sure, for instance, that all their plantings don't die. And we're allowed to hold that for two years. And then I make a recommendation to the governing body to release that after the two-year maintenance period, or just before the two-year maintenance period is up. So there, there, and that's all provided by the municipal land use law. It's not specific to Cape May. This happens throughout every New Jersey community. But there, there is a process. We do track them. Now, the ones that get denied, if they go out there and don't do something, that becomes a city issue because I don't have, I don't have an inspection escrow and it's, I don't track those. You know, theoretically they're supposed to fix it.
Yeah, I'm just looking for what the process is to make sure it doesn't fall through the cracks. I mean, these two, I, I don't think they, they're not going to. I know that they're not going to, but.
But I just don't know, I was just wondering what the, what the process is.
City staff.
But it sounds like Karen's on top of it. She says, Bruce sits on your list and.
Your zoning, your zoning and compliance officers, exactly.
I think even the city solicitor contacted me and said, make sure if this doesn't go through that you let Bruce know. So there's a lot of eyes on things.
Thanks, just, just curious what the process is.
What happened with the Grand Hotel, it was really hard for me to remember if they came to the zoning board or not because I was also working for the HPC at the time. And they came a couple of times to HPC, but I don't know how they got their permits without coming to the planning board. But I was still new then, didn't really understand. So the reason they didn't, that they were able to do that because they had permits to do a lot of other things and it just, they just snuck that in. Like, they just did that with permits open for other big projects.
Mm-hmm.
It's like they took that atrium out that used to be there.
Yep.
And so they went many times, met with the HPC, or at least more than one time, about that project. So there were a lot of changes from HPC, what they wanted, and I didn't really understand the process, but it probably should have gone to the planning board before they got permits. But that's what happened.
Can I ask you a question? I don't know if this.
Can you turn your mic on? Mic, please. Your microphone. Thank you very much.
In an open meeting, where, where do we stand on the litigation for the local? I know the city, as I understand, won the case. Can we speak about that?
You cannot ask a more complicated legal question than that one. We, we have, we have won, we have won nearly all of the case. There is an appeal of Judge Blee's last decision that gave them until December thirtieth to comply. I may be wrong about December thirtieth, it may be December first. I could be wrong about one of those two things.
Yeah, we're, we're in that, in that zone.
It's right in that zone. And the Cal tried to file an emergency stay in the, in the appellate division, which was denied. And I think as of now, the city is probably recommencing their effort to start fining and doing bad things. That's what, that's, that's what they should be doing, in my opinion. Again, I'm not in control of that. My major issue in that case is shells on the sidewalk, which are still there amazingly. That was an issue that was never appealed. So I never understood why that wasn't done, and Judge Blee didn't understand it either, and told them they had to do it. So they just keep spending money and appealing and doing their thing and trying to get stays and they keep losing. So, and the city is going to start fining them and instituting the fines. And at some point, I think the city's within its rights to pull their CO and they're out of business till they comply. And I don't think they're going to get a lot of sympathy from Judge Blee, who gave them four, six months to do things, and they didn't do any of them. I don't think they've done any of them.
So that move, that basically from, from a process point of view, that moves now to the city solicitor in the city?
Let me explain a legal concept that'll make this make more sense. I kind of assumed it and didn't do it properly. And it relates to something somebody asked over there about the forty-five days. Things don't stop just because you appeal. So if you're ordered to remove a roof and you don't like Judge Blee's decision, and you file an appeal, you have to remove the roof, and you can still be fined for it, you can still be shut down. That's the decision. Unless the court issues a stay, meaning that the court says, okay, I decided this, but I'm going to let you, I'm going to hold off the compliance. It's kind of like being suspended without pay, right? But I'm going to hold off compliance until the appellate division decides this. Well, they asked Judge Blee that. After they lost, they asked Judge Blee for a stay. And to get a stay, you have to show a reasonable degree of probability of success on the merits and irreparable harm, a bunch of things you got to show. And Judge Blee didn't believe that they, they showed that. So they, they denied, but they lost the stay. So as of that point, the city is able to enforce the last decision of the last judge that decided it. Now you can appeal the denial of the stay, you can go to the appellate division, hey, wait a minute, we have to tear apart our hotel. Don't make us do that. And the appellate division hasn't issued that stay. So right now, the city can be doing any of the enforcement mechanisms that are at their disposal, whatever they are. Not my bailiwick, but they can. Okay?
Yeah.
You mentioned that, and I didn't realize either, a person can put a solid four-foot fence in the front yard, and that maybe we should take this back to maybe council to make an ordinance where you can have a solid four-foot fence in the front yard?
Yeah, I mean, I think the place to send it to might be the planning board, but Craig, how's that work? I thought we were supposed to report to the planning board, is recommended changes.
Yeah, you can, it can go either way, but I mean, the planning board is making a lot of recommendations right now, so it's probably a good time to do that. If, if this board wants to forward a recommendation to them, we'll certainly bring it to them.
Yeah, there was a, there was a point there a couple of years ago, that we provided the planning board with an array of things that we thought needed to be looked at.
Right. The, the current pool regulations came from, originally came from the zoning board. There's been other recommendations, I think with our grandfathering of, you know, the twenty-year.
And also the, the undersized lots, reconstructing undersized lots that comply with the other bulk requirements.
We were hearing a whole bunch of things that.
Which through the ire of all the local zoning attorneys, they all yell at me because they come in to get these variances that were,
Yeah.
you know, kind of, kind of gimmies to reconstruct on an undersized lot. Now they don't do them, and so they're all mad at me. The one thing about this, this paperwork is we're going to, we're going to hear it again. Somebody from town is going to call and say, you guys approve everything. And, you know, I have to do the explanation, no. Well, I thought that what's approved isn't what they asked for. A lot of things people ask for, Craig tells them, go away, you're never going to get it.
Yeah, you guys never see half the stuff that I.
I think, I think Craig understands us better than we understand ourselves. Cause, cause something, I'm like, oh yeah, it should be an easy one. No, I knew it wasn't going.
But your, your, your decision-making establishes a bar. And a lot of the attorneys turn away work, and they don't even bring it to, they don't even bounce it off of me. They're just like, no, that's, that's not even going to fly. I'm not taking that work. You know, so you don't, a lot of this is filtered out just because of they know how you rule on certain things. So if it's a similar case to something that you guys typically turn down, a lot of the attorneys won't even touch it, you'll never see it. So therefore, most people are bringing applications here that have a, at least percentage chance of.
Chance.
Of getting approved. So, yeah, and you can see, like, you know.
Like tonight, that guy lost, that guy probably lost by five feet, right? And if, if he had stuck with his original proposal, there's a possibility he would have succeeded, and it'd be on that list as approved. But did you really approve what was asked for, right? So, so a lot of these approvals are things that get massaged and scaled back a lot, and then they get approved, and this doesn't necessarily reflect that.
Right.
Yeah, but there, there are, I get applications and I, I open them up and I say, whoa. And I'll call the attorney. I'm like, do you really, you really think that you have a chance on this? Like, what, what's your thinking here? Am I looking at the plans right? You know, that, those.
Yeah, like, you'll notice we've granted more floor ratios lately. That's because people don't ask for them willy-nilly. And when they come in for them, they usually are of a type that we might actually approve. You know, they're filling a hole in an old, in an old house, you know, or something else. But you're not getting new construction at ten percent over.
Adding historic context to a building or something like that.
They just don't bring them anymore. You know, it's like, it's like an outfielder who throws people out all the time, and then all of a sudden he's gonna throw anybody out just because no one's running anymore. So they keep getting thrown out. So, you know, it's a thing.
Yeah, I've had people come to me and say, well, if I wanted to do this or that or the other thing, you think it'll get through? And my answer to them is, don't have your architect do anything that requires a variance.
So we're all kind of agreeing that we don't like this solid vinyl fence. So what, what do we do with that too?
Is there anything in the, I have to go back and look at my manual. But is there anything in the, in the HPC, you know, the standards that were just published?
I was, I was talking to Rich about that. So he's like, I don't see this happening throughout town because the majority of the town, it's not occurring in the historic district because if, that's not historical context. It will never get through the historic review. So it never even gets to us. But, you know, in the periphery of the town, what's not in the HPC, you'll, you see some of this stuff. That's, that's all new construction over there. So that's why you're, you see it over there. So it's not prevalent, but it can happen. And tonight was a perfect case where it can happen.
So how does our suggestion that we don't like that get to?
I think you just take a, a simple vote that says we recommend that this be looked at by the planning board. We see this as a problem.
Yeah, no solid white vinyl fences in front of a house in any way, shape or form.
Just a solid fence. I mean, even if it was wood.
They can be black.
Right.
Like in fact, a lot of people have that vinyl, or wrought iron fence. It doesn't look too bad. Something like that would be acceptable to me, but.
Yeah, I think solid fence, I mean, those.
I think you're right, solid fence, because even wood, if you have a stockade-type fence, does not look good either.
Right. So, so please have the, the planning board look at solid fences in front yards. The appropriateness of solid fences and, and what the design standards are.
Is that what you do, Karen?
Well, you know what, if everybody raises their hand, if everybody raises their hand and say that's what they want, just show a hand. Does anyone say no? Okay, then when I send this report, after you adopt the report, I will also say, and the zoning board requests that you consider changing the zoning for solid fences in front yards. I will do that. Just for you guys, though. Tell your friends.
That's a characteristic.
And I, I usually give this speech because I, a lot of times we do the master plan, but these things don't go unused. When we do master plans or when we're taking a look at zoning changes and, you know, any zoning ordinance change, we look at the pattern. Is, and, you know, if we're disapproving things or things that are repetitive, like, why are we constantly having to deal with, for instance, a front yard setback in the R3 district? Let's take a look at that. You know, do we need to adjust the, the setback distance? Like, what's going on? Why is it so repetitive? Why, you know, is it not consistent with the neighborhood and what the building pattern is? So we look at those things when we do re-examinations and make, and make recommendations for changes based on this stuff. So.
Craig, one thing that I have a question about is the, we seem to have gotten locked in somehow based on some historical analysis that the, and I've gotten locked in in the appellate division on this, is that this ten-foot requirement for the pool from a structure is because of ladders for firefighters. And I believe you when you say that, like, that that's the reason they did it. But there's a million other reasons why you would not want a house to be surrounding.
Yeah, it's a, it's a safety issue. You can jump off the house into the pool.
Yeah, so we've kind of got locked in on that. And it'd be nice if we had our planning board in our, like, review or something. Make a statement that, that the purpose of that is not just for fire safety, but also for access around the pool in case there's a child drowning in the corner, and you got to be able to walk over there and get it. So.
Right.
I just, our records up till now make it seem like that's the only reason, and we're having a problem with that in court.
That could be a simple change just to the zoning ordinance without even touching the master plan, is just say for safety purposes. And it, for safety purposes, comma, and then.
That's all that had to be added.
Can we recommend to change them on that or?
I can, yeah.
I don't like for safety purposes, that's fire too, but say something like, in order to provide access around the pool, it's required that, or something like that.
Okay, yeah, we can add, you know, whatever phrasing it is.
And I know, and I know the board senses that, you know, they want to kind of, they want to tighten the reins on pools, and that ten-foot thing does make them a little smaller, and it fits in less yards, and allows for more landscaping and all the other factors that go into it. So it's, it's good to have.
Okay.
But, you know, as much as we say there's kind of big constraints on the pools, it seems like everybody wants a pool.
Everybody wants a pool, yeah.
So.
But, well, the other issue too is, is the pool, is the pool setback only applicable to the main structure? Or is it applicable to an ancillary building?
Like jumping off the garage into the pool.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So it says from the principal structure is how it's written.
Yeah, so, so if you have an out, if you have another structure, it doesn't, because there is an issue, or there is a situation in town where garage door opens over the pool.
I know the house you're talking about, yeah, exactly. It builds a garage, and you can open the door and step right into the pool.
Yeah.
New construction.
Yeah.
You could dive off the garage into the pool.
The, the current pool regulations, you know, it has a landscaping section. It actually allows the accessory structures to, to function as buffering.
Oh, really?
Yes, it's stated in there, so.
I also noticed that the fire inspection sheet that we get, there's never any comments. It's always just signed off. And I really question if anyone is actually going out and looking at that. Do we know?
Karen, do you have a dialogue with them?
Well, it's funny you say that because I actually went to the, talked to the chief or whatever at one time, say, you guys, did you look at this? Do you not have any concerns with this? Because I was, I had a concern. I wanted to know if they had the same concern, if they felt, or just tell me, no, because of this reason, and I'd be, you know, fine.
I just never see any comment. And there's been questions on these, so.
I think they have, the overall impression that I get from Chief Coulter is that they think everybody really has a high regard for safety and that they're not really trying to do anything unsafe. But I can tell you that just Tuesday night, there was, he wrote a comment that he wanted something done on a planning board application. So there are comments, but there aren't, there aren't many.
Yeah, so they do, when they see something dangerous, they do comment. And we just had one at the planning board, and it resulted in tabling an application, having the applicant come back and redesign it.
Yeah, well, I mean, I mean, one of my concerns with, is what down there, Cape May Marina, how narrow the streets are to even get the fire truck, you know, through there and everything. And even back on Cowhorn, you know, Claghorn.
You can't get anything back there.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying? Like, did anybody ever look at these plans that they could get a fire truck back in there? Because they, they can't, you know, and.
That development has a long storied history.
Yes.
The Cape May Marina, yeah.
And there's a lot, and next thing this street is quarantined.
Yeah.
So anything else, or do you need us to vote on this?
Yes, I think you make a motion to send the, accept the report and send it to the planning board.
Anyone want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Vernuto.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Knatch.
Hey, Mr. Levin.
Yes.
Mrs. Knatch.
Yes.
Ms. Sheehan.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Mr. Zexer.
Yes.
Mr. Vernuto.
Yes.
Mrs. Werner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, this one is from 2023. Is, by the time we get to, like, a whole year has passed, is there any way we can do it, like, sooner so we can remember what happened?
So I did introduce it, I think in April, but it could have been August. It began with an A. And you, you guys didn't want to do it then. So I, I did hold it to we had just two. So I'll try to have it ready earlier next year, and then we'll manage it so there's just two applications and, and the report.
Because I, I'm like, I thought we denied that one, like, then I realized it was 23 and not 24.
Karen, do we do this, is this our domain?
Karen does it a lot quicker than a lot of my other boards, so.
That's okay. You know what?
So, so.
When I did the first one, it hadn't been done in five years, so.
To your point though, Craig, should we look at? To your point though, Craig, should we look at modifying this somehow to say that it was not the original, that there was a negotiated settlement?
No, to that one, yes.
No? I mean, cause you're right. There's people that have said to me, well, you guys approve everything, no matter what comes to you.
Well, I would put approved as revised.
Well, that's, 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 that's inappropriate.
If you wanna start listing that, you could certainly-
Yeah, because otherwise people think this is-
Karen keeps track of it.
This is a slam dunk to come here, there's no problem.
Well, should we revise then? Or maybe for next year, put in, you know?
Well, that's who, who, I think that's a good, good option. Approved as revised.
Yeah.
I will, yes, I, I shall do that for 2024. That'll be fine.
Well, even the one on page two at the top, we approved part of it, but we denied part of it too, so.
But it says approved.
But I don't think that was reflected.
I don't know where the, where the, this, this comes to light someplace in the community and they, they, they take it, it just, it happens.
Right.
That's what that means.
Yeah, that was a tricky one.
Every application has to stand on its own merit. You can't just say, hey, if you get a modified page, you can, Chris, I get that.
Right.
So even if it was modified, they still got the variance. But I can put that there so people will be wary of just coming in. They'll know, there could be a, a negotiation. Although they should all be watching the meetings if they're coming, if you ask me. I would, I would.
Afraid to come here.
So we also need an approval of the, um, of the bills here.
Second.
There you go.
Okay, Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Mrs. Knatch?
Yes.
Ms. Ian? Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Zexar?
Yes.
Mr. Venuto?
Yes.
Mrs. Werner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Adjournment? Motion to adjourn?
I should adjourn.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.